Well, be careful.
Be careful what you wish for.
Not quite time.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi, good morning.
Who? Where?
I'm Phil Ryan.
Really? Just got to get our clock synced with our clock. Oh, yeah.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Committee of the whole meeting for February 4th, 2025. Would everyone please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderguised, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Reports from state and county officials, either any state or county officials that are with us this morning that would like to update the board. Hearing none. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for items that are listed on our agenda.
Morning. Joel Levinson, township. Okay, all right. I realize dialogue is not supposed to happen, but when do we get to firm? Do you know approximately?
The firm for what do we, what do we?
Feasibility.
Vice. For feasibility study? I understand that they will not be here today, but there will be opportunities to have interaction certainly with the public on that whole process.
So I've researched them to the best of my ability, and this looks much better than what we have with Tower Pinkster. So if they accomplish what they have set out to accomplish in here, I would like to add a couple bullet points for them to look into, but beyond that, I'm actually happy with that. So one thing I would like to see out of that, and I wouldn't even mind chipping in an extra 50 bucks for gas money for them, so that they could come down and shadow a corrections officer over the course of a day. I think that would really open their eyes. Tower Pinkster seemed very out of touch, like they, you know, were going off of other people's words and then skimming off of that. But I'm looking forward to meeting them. Thank you. Thank you.
Additional public comment.
Rick Moore, Still Harbor Master, Potons Like Yacht Club, and yes, I surrendered my chair. She didn't steal it from me. Shocking. I wish to remind members and guests to speak into the microphone or use your outdoor voice. We have some very silent speakers over here, and I can't always hear what you say. I really wish to. Most of the time I can now, a little bit, but I'm sitting in that back corner now. And so we have a lot of new guests here, and I wish to remind them all, please, use your outdoor voice so we can all hear what you say, because there's hundreds of people who listen to this every day, every Tuesday anyway, who are not here. And so that's why these microphones are so important. And I appreciate having the IT people here, but I'm a logite. I don't have a computer and all of that other stuff, recently a cell phone. But please, take advantage of technology, because we're here to learn from your vast pool of wisdom. And there's plenty of room in my head for that vast pool of wisdom, so please continue to share that with me. Thank you very much. I'm Rick Moore, not related to any other boards, and I support this message. Speak into the microphone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And as a side note, we did have a audio company come in and look at our microphones, tweak a few things, fix a few things, so hopefully it is clear for the hundreds, if not millions, of people who are listening to this broadcast live today, more or less. So we'll see. Additional public comment.
Hearing none. We will move ahead with our agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the January 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. So move. Motion by Hatfield, support by Carlton for approval of the January 1st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the January 23rd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Getty for approval of the January 2020, January 23rd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next on our agenda, Jim Yager.
Morning. Rick, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. We're all set then. That's the important thing. That's the important thing. I get it. My hearing gets worse every day. Jim, just go ahead with what I'm here for. I'm here to request, sign an intergovernmental funding agreement with St. Joe County. Each emergency management district within Michigan must have one fiduciary to represent all the counties in that district to do the money in with the county or with the state for fundings, for grant funding. The fifth district emergency management board has chosen St. Joe County. They've been our fiduciary for a number of years, and they've, the bigger thing is they've agreed to do it and they can do it. So that's, so I'm here to ask that you sign this intergovernmental funding agreement with St. Joe. It's set out now, most of the projects we do are regional, and St. Joe just purchases them directly, and there's not a lot of paperwork, funding stuff on the county end, although they do allow us, we get, I think we, county, Berry gets like $7,000 a year for conferences and trainings and stuff.
I'm always amazed that this says fiscal year 2024, so we're still behind?
We're still behind. This is way better than when I started this, because we were like on, well, I think when I got it, took this job, we were like in the, I kid you not, like the 11th quarter of some grant that was years ago. It's like, how do we keep this straight? Because now we got like six fiscal years that have all crossed and
Exactly.
We're only, we're only working like two or three at a time now, so.
So this is a standard agreement?
Yes.
This is what we do every year?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we've, I've seen this several times come through. So for Commissioner Bassett, this is just standard operating procedure, something that we approve every year. Our funding, funding has to flow through fiduciary and St. Joe's, the fifth district, so.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Microphone on.
Okay. So other than our county, how many counties is?
The fifth district?
It's nine. Nine altogether.
Okay.
So southwest Michigan, basically. We're the, we're the farthest northeast county in the fifth district. It follows the MSP district lines.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So St. Joseph County is the fiduciary for all nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional questions from Mr. Yager? It's pretty simple. We do it every year. Happy to see we're on 2024, one of these days.
Yeah, we're kind of getting caught up, so maybe.
The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-06, a resolution of authorization for the 2024 Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and approval of the, approval and authorize the Chair and Administrator to sign.
So move.
Motion by Tunisin, support by Smelker, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-06, a resolution of authorization for the 2024 Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and approval to authorize the Chair and Administrator to sign. Discussion? All those in favor sit, oops.
I just want to say, should we ask Eric if he wants this job?
If you want, if you want my inside opinion on it, no.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, Tammy Price. Good morning, Tammy.
Good morning.
If you'd like to explain to us this agenda request, or in a little more detail.
Yeah, sure.
Pretty obvious, but.
So my office used to accept funding from the state for services that covered both problem-solving courts and MDOC probationers. The state has slowly but surely changed the rules and made it more and more difficult for rural counties to follow their rules in order to receive the funding. We met with the State Board, Inez and I went before the State Board to express our concerns. We had a meeting with Michigan Office of Community Corrections that included some of the administrative professionals through MDOC, our local OCC office, Judge and Attorney Dave Tripp, who sits on the CCAB currently, to express our concerns that this wasn't working for Berry County. Also, we met with Representative Julia Calley at the time. We've met with Representatives Gina Johnson and Rochelle Schmidt, and we also met with Kyle Kaminsky and Gina Johnson, attempting to get the state to make rules that are more applicable to small rural counties, but it really just seemed to us that they were interested in funding the larger counties, which is unfortunate, because the larger counties already have a plethora of resources, and Berry County really has to make do with what we have and to do the best we can. But it really fell upon deaf ears, and so I'm here today because the CCAB voted last week to dissolve. It doesn't seem that we can meet the criteria that OCC has in order to receive funding. We've found other sources to provide programming to our specialty courts. The Michigan Department of Corrections' local office in Berry County has been using Kalamazoo County virtual services, and they have not come to me and said we really need services for regular probationers. So we have found other funding sources to serve our specialty court population, which includes our local, or not local, our scale grants, as well as SWIMBA. They have continued to fund our office. Thank you, Mark Doster, for bringing that opportunity to our office. But we've kind of covered what we need to with different funds, and so there's no reason to go forward trying to meet the state's requirements to receive the funding, and then ultimately local funding would have to step in and pay because we didn't meet the state requirements. And I just think that puts Berry County at risk, and I'm not willing to do that.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Is this a common problem that with most smaller counties?
Yeah.
And are we getting any support from Michigan Association of Counties or anything to try to work collectively to force some changes?
Yeah, I know that. Inez had reached out to the Michigan Association of Counties and had talked with some people there a few times, but really we didn't get any support. I think that counties are sometimes weary of complaining in fear of retaliation. That's the best I can answer that. We didn't receive a lot of support, and not a lot of counties were willing to step forward formally. In the background, the day that Inez and I went and spoke before the State Board, I did have a couple of other counties come up to me and say, this is a real issue. When I've attended other meetings that OCC administrators are also present at, they've also expressed concern that it's really difficult to get that funding and get the OCC or get the MDOC to make the referrals needed to keep the groups going. Plus the changing rules. I mean, one year they funded drug testing, the next year they didn't. I, it's really difficult to budget for that with, when you don't know what they're going to fund from year to year and what the rules are going to be. They just kept changing the rules.
Mr. Smelker, you sit on that board. Any input?
I agree with not moving for, with moving forward with this resolution, because I believe that the state seems to think that the larger counties should get more than the smaller counties, and of course, I disagree with that. So it, it should be on a percentage basis, and I guess I would, on the board that you guys went before and talked to, are they appointed or are they out of larger counties, these people on this board?
They're appointed by the governor to sit on that board, and I am not sure which counties they're from.
Okay. But I feel that the larger counties have a larger voice.
Yeah. And I sat on the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a while, and it seemed like a good organization as far as getting together and sharing ideas and resources together like that. How much funding were we talking about at one point when?
We had about $110,000 one year, I believe.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it was a significant chunk of money, but also we were funding services for MDOC, for their regular probation population, and we're not doing that anymore. So the amount of funding that we needed was significantly less because we didn't have MDOC probationers. The state, again, said we're not going to do drug testing for the regular probation population, so that was a huge expense that would have been removed anyway. And then the virtual programming that they're attending through Kalamazoo has taken place of the in-person programming for those regular probationers, and we've shifted to offering that same programming, but using grant funding, because we're offering it only to the problem-solving courts instead of outside to regular probationers, which we can't do because of grant funding. We have to only offer those services to the people that are in the program.
Okay, so the CCAB was formed as a requirement to receive these funds to start with. We're going to have received funds for two or three years from this, so at this point, we're spinning our wheels and wasting our time until we get a different administration in there or do something that recognizes the needs of smaller counties. So at that point, we can reinstitute this as needed. We have all the funding or we have all the paperwork, bylaws, everything in place to do it, so.
Yeah, it would be pretty easy to form the committee. Again, in fact, the CCAB members said, you know, if ever we form a committee, we already know each other. We're here.
Okay. I don't see a problem with this going forward for the time being. Additional questions or comments?
The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to dissolve the Berry County Community Corrections Advisory Board as recommended by the Berry County Advisory Board, Community Corrections Advisory Board. Is that Bassett?
Yeah.
Motion by Bassett, support by Smelker, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to dissolve the Berry County Community Corrections Advisory Board as recommended by the Berry County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Rachel France. Several agenda items here to go over this morning.
Yeah, sorry to do them all at once. All right, so first, the bylaws, they're pretty standard. We used the, this is again for the Material Management Planning Committee, the new committee that is mostly replacing the Solid Waste Oversight Committee. These are, the basis was provided by Eagle, and the committee worked through them, so these are, what you have is the final copy. So we would just request your approval to sign and officially adopt these bylaws for our committee.
Commissioner Getty or Commissioner Hatfield, any questions or concerns?
No issues. I, they're very straightforward, so.
I'll say to the legislature, okay.
I'll support it.
Okay. Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to adopt the proposed Material Management Planning Committee MMPC, MMPC bylaws. Additional discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you. So the second item is the agreement between the County of Kalamazoo with Berry County to provide, to allow our residents to utilize their household hazardous waste facility. This is something that the committee has talked about, having a permanent facility, but in the meantime, this is something that our residents can do. I can't remember their hours off the top of my head, but it's more than twice a year. They're open, I think, three or four days a week. People can come. They have agreements with multiple different counties and townships, so we are requesting that $5,000 are set aside from the solid waste fund to pay for these services for our residents. It is something that's quarterly billed, so if nobody goes, then we spend no money. Any questions on that?
How will we promote this so people realize this is an option, and how will they, when you say household hazardous waste, broad category, so how do we educate people on what constitutes household hazardous waste versus yard clippings, and where they take them, what the fees are going to be, if there's extra fees that they would pay out of their pocket, if they bring a television set, you know, versus tires?
Yeah. So, well, actually, I'll just mention right now, they do not accept tires. But they do accept TVs. So they, I have written up in, hoping that this is approved, I have written up a educational column for the reminder that I will publish that lets people know about the new program opportunity, where to find, actually, no, I think I listed out what's accepted and what's not, just so it's out there. But it's also available on their website, and I'm including it on our website, so people could go there now and use it. Anybody can go there, but they would have to pay until we have this agreement. Then it would be free for our residents because we already have money in our hazardous waste fund.
Okay. Is there a mechanism in place that you're aware of, so we know that when somebody from Berry County shows up to Kalamazoo County and has a television set or something, are they recording a name and an address? Are they taking a driver's license? How do we know that somebody in the office goes, hey, Berry County's got five grand, even though you're from Kalamazoo or Van Buren or Calhoun, just come on in. Berry County will pay for it?
I'm not exactly su, I know they would check IDs and categorize people that way, but I have their participation report right here from the third quarter of last year, and it goes by township. So they're either asking that directly from the customer or getting it from their license, so they are making sure to build a correct municipality for those services.
Okay.
I guess there's no way for me to check that, but they seem like great people over there. I visited and did a tour, and I think they would do the right thing and not give us to somebody else.
Is $5,000 adequate?
That's kind of what we'll find out. We're not sure. I mean, we spend $50,000 or more a year on hazardous waste for our two events. So if all of our people went there, no, it would not be enough, but I'm thinking this is going to be something more utilized by the southern half of the county since it's in Kalamazoo. So I don't think, I don't even think we'll reach the 5,000, because it's a $39 participation fee when a person goes, and then a percentage of the cost of disposal. So I think it was 10%, but it's pretty low. It's not, we actually were talking to Sarah from the city of Hastings. She wants to bring her batteries. I think she's got a couple hundred pounds, and it was going to cost just over $100, I think. So, and that's without the agreement.
Okay.
Which is a lot for batteries.
Questions from commissioners or questions or input from Commissioner Getty?
We clearly cannot afford to have a year-round hazardous waste disposal operation. This does not replace the two events. The whole 30-year goes will continue, but at least it gives residents another option, and we do have the money in place, so.
Okay. Commissioner Getty?
I just, I looked up the hours of operation, and they're really quite available. So on Tuesdays and Fridays, eight to one, Wednesday's 12 to six, and then the second Saturdays from eight to noon. So it's about 45 minutes from city of Hastings, so closer anybody south. And I think it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of people don't like to hold on to stuff, you know, for our two collections, and I think this will keep it out of the, out of the line, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Smelker, you have a question?
Mr. Hatfield answered it, but I believe it's, it's a good idea, especially if nobody uses it, it don't cost them, right?
Yeah, that's kind of what sold me, was we don't have to give them the money and wait. It would just get billed.
Commissioner Tunisin?
I just think it'd be a lot more convenient for people who live in Orangeville and Prairieville and that area. To go that way than burst me and drive all the way to Fairgrounds. Just seems like it, that's a good thing.
Additional questions or comments?
I do have another question. Is there, are there facilities in Kent County or in Alleghen County where we could have similar agreements?
I can look into that. I know Kent County has quite a few facilities, and I talk to them pretty regularly, so I can check in with that, but I'm not, I've not seen them do that with anybody else, whereas Kalamazoo does this with a lot of people.
Well, for instance, I mean, my folks in Melville in my district, that'd be, you know, quite the drive.
Yeah.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of a one-year contract with the Kalamazoo County Household Hazardous Waste Center to allow Berry County residents to utilize the HHW drop-off service up to $5,000 in calendar year 2025.
So move.
Support. Motion by Tunisin, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of a one-year contract with the Kalamazoo County Household Hazardous Waste Center to allow Berry County residents to utilize the HHW drop-off services up to $5,000 in calendar year 2025. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I do have a question, I think, for Eric. When we have a committee like the Hazardous Waste Committee, and we have money allocated to them, when do they have authority to enter into something like this versus having to bring it back to us?
Every, there are certain purchasing thresholds that, you know, I have the $7,000 that others have less. So a lot of the committees, unless it's specifically set aside, it'd be coming back to you. If we had caught on the budget that was putting aside $5,000 for this, you know, potentially they could run with it. But you've got a contract you're dealing with, so there hasn't come back to you every time.
They have a contract with us, but they have money.
I meant that you, this is a contract you're dealing with right now.
Yeah.
With a different entity, so even though there's money in there, there's just contracts coming back to you to review and approve.
Question answered?
A question answered, but yes, it needs to be here. Now, the next question is, does it really need to come here? Yeah, our, at some point.
We can have that discussion.
We should probably look at, yeah, how we operate with all of our entities and, yeah, make sure that we're not wasting their time and ours reviewing agreements that have nominal impact, have any impact on, on county operations.
For example, if we use $5,000 in three quarters, and they want to put another $2,000 into it for the fourth quarter, and they have the funds, does that need to come back to the board, or could that materials management approve that money?
Yeah. I mean, at this point, we spend money for each of the household hazardous waste events that we hold. We don't typically come back here and ask for those contracts to be a We don't typically come back here and ask for those contracts to be approved. So, I'm just wondering, where, where is the line drawn between what needs to come here and what doesn't need to come here, given that the money has already been approved and we've delegated the authority to spend that money to them?
This is a new service, too. So, this is going to come back to you every time. It's a new contract. I mean, I'm not going to just push this through. We were prepared to do this and make sure everything was good. Nothing else I'm concerned about in the contract, but that's typically new service, new contracts. I want you to see them and approve them. That's something we can talk about as we move forward. If you're comfortable.
I just, I'm not familiar with all the contracts that we enter into for the hazardous waste events.
Well, I do bring the, we don't bring the drug and lab one, but we did, when we switched to Republic this last year, we did bring that to you guys, and I think that I usually do send, no, I don't. I don't send my padnos agreement to you guys, so I don't know if I'm supposed to.
So, is this something for future discussion? Thank you.
There you go. Something to think about. Okay. Number three, MMPC grant request for work programs.
Yes. So, this, this is the money, the grant money that I have been talking about for two years now, I think. So, it's a little different than we anticipated. The DPAs, the Designated Planning Agencies, who I'm kind of am right now, we all had a big meeting, and somebody from Eagle was present to help us. But in the grant proposal, it states that it is a reimbursement grant, and it's annual. So, we are not okay with that. We're working on discussion with Eagle to get that at least changed to quarterly, and we have to designate the funds prior. So, we don't automatically get the $90,000. We have to say, we want X amount of money for this, and then we'll have to, you know, which I knew we would have to provide invoices and those sort of things. But we did reach out to Eagle to find out if we designate $90,000 this year to a consultant, but we only spend 30, what happens? And she did let us know that that money will just be moved to the next year. So, the work program that you have on your desk is a one-year work program. We did request $90,000 for the consultant. The first, and this again is another template provided by Eagle, so I'm just kind of following their lead. They did let us know that nothing that's on their website, as far as these templates, is actually finalized and approved, so.
Great.
We have an extension to the end of February to submit this to Eagle, so I'm hoping to just get that done. So, it's off my plate, and I don't have to worry about it anymore. So, our first task is to hire a consultant to do the next couple of tasks, which is mostly data-driven. So, determining how much our people are contributing to our landfill, how much our division rate is, who else is contributing to our landfill, transfer stations, things of that nature. And then also developing our goals. In the third and fourth quarter of this one-year plan, we do hope to include a public participation aspect to get the community's goals involved, because we want to hear everybody. The municipalities chose not to participate as far as being the more involved on the committee, but we want to make sure that all of their people have a chance to let us know what they want and what they need.
Do you have a consultant in mind?
I have a few in mind, but we are still working on getting that RFP sent out, and I will send it, I'm planning to send it to Fishbeck, to RRS, who they kind of led the way on the first data collection for the Megadata profile that we talked about back in 2022, I think. Iris Waste Division, who did our 2018 recycling assessment study. And then I have one more that I cannot think of. It's some I just met, but I am sending that to them, too. So, but we'll also post it on the website and all that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that RFP will be back to Rachel this weekend, so her staff will be.
Excellent.
Commissioner Getty, any questions or input?
I'm excited to be making progress. We have been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah, it's been a minute, hasn't it? Commissioner Hatfield?
Nothing else.
Okay.
I think, yeah, there's an underlying suspicion that Eagle has got some good friends in the consulting business, and they're making sure that they're well taken care of.
No further questions. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Good work, Rachel. I know this has been a process that's had a lot of moving targets and dates and juggling and trying to figure out what Eagle wants, going from what we were to Materials Management Planning, and it's, it's been a process. So, appreciate you sticking with us, and we appreciate your leadership in this as well, as everybody does in that committee. So, the Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the proposed MMPC work program and grant budget for the year one of drafting the new county materials management plan.
Some moved.
Having said what I said, I feel I should redeem myself.
There you go. Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval for the proposed MMPC work program and grant budget for the year one of drafting the new county materials management plan. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Rachel. Yes. County Clerk Sarah Vandenberg.
Good morning. So, what I'm here today to ask for is, there's a grant out there under the Help America Vote Act. It's for election security and physical security devices that we can apply to have under a grant. So, we get up to $2,400 that we can spend and get reimbursed from the state for. So, what I'm looking for are tabulator bags, which are the equipment that we hold your programming in on Election Day. We have three devices, one for early voting and two for voting days, that if there's something that happens in the precinct that we have two extras on hand and one for early voting that we can take out to the township or have them come get it. Right now, they're just in boxes. So, under best practices and requirements from the state, we're supposed to have them locked in a bag and with our state seal on it that we record. So, what I'm looking for is to buy three of those. The other things that I'm looking for are, we have programming that goes out to the townships, and our Election Day, they're in little envelopes like this, and there's so much stuff that goes in those that, and I know that Dave can probably account for that firsthand from Debbie. What it is, is they're really little. They have all that stuff in it, and our newer bags for early voting and absentee voting, they're bigger bags. So, they're $8 apiece. I'd like to purchase 26 of those for the townships and have two extra on hand for the county. Those are sealed. And then I would like to get bags for the test ballots that we have in the office. Right now, they're stored in the vault locked, but I really would like to get them after we use our testing before each election, just put them in a bag like the townships do and have them stored under seal.
I see the grant request is for $2,400. That's the maximum amount you can request per year, or?
For, for right now. So, we get, right, we get $100 per precinct, so that's, we have 24 precincts. The townships have the same ability to request this, and they get $1,000 per precinct that they can request. So, they can upgrade. I know that Windows 11 Pro is a requirement, so they can request under the grant to, to upgrade to that, any selection security like locks or anything for their precincts. They can also request that under the grant. So, this is just for the county, for us to keep some things secured.
Fantastic. Questions from commissioners? Seems like a simple request, so.
Thanks.
The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of a grant submission to the Michigan Department of State have a election security for the acquisition of ballot storage bags, tabulator storage cases, and media transfer bags.
Some move? Support? Campbell?
Motion by Tuneson, support by Campbell, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of a grant submission to the Michigan Department of State for the acquisition of ballot storage bags, tabulator storage cases, and media transfer bags. Additional discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Courtney Zini?
We're going to squeeze three of us up here in case there's questions that.
Courtney Zini, my team.
So, to introduce, I'm Courtney Zini, Executive Director of the Commission on Aging. This is Greg Deeds. He's Vice.
Vice President.
Vice President. I knew, I don't, why couldn't I think of that word? Vice President of Frederick Construction, and then we're Becky Dehan, who is the Administrator at Thornpool Manor in Harvest Point. So, I wanted to give a little bit of background because I know Marcia's new. I never anticipated when I took this position that I would be doing as much public speaking as what I've done. However, when I went to do this agenda request, some timing, just, it's kind of funny. Apparently, February is our month to make some big moves for this project. So, back in February of 2023, that's when conversations first started between the COA and the county about making the facility a priority and what that looked like. And then in, 2023 was a big year, right? So, we did our pre-design work with the architect, kind of looked at what maybe a basic budget would look like, and by the end of 2023, we had a conceptual drawing. We're excited to move forward. So, it was actually February 20th of last year that I came before you, and we asked to move forward with the actual conception, not conceptual designs, the actual construction designs and moving forward with that, and went into contract at that time with the architect. Last summer, we came again and requested going into contract with a construction manager, so Frederick Construction. We did interviews at that time, and that's who the committee determined would be the best fit. So, they jumped on real quick, and it was probably late summer, came back with what they thought was a proposed budget, or not what they thought, it was a proposed budget. Yeah, right, a conceptual budget. And I said, no, that that wouldn't work. So, they were really good in understanding, and so it was determined that the next steps would really be to put the project out to bid, so we could see, go from a conceptual budget to an actual, like, preliminary budget and, and maybe hone in on some of those details. So, we did go out to bid just before Thanksgiving. We pushed back the bid date twice in order to clarify some questions and respond to some questions from some of the subcontractors. So, we ended up proceeding 60 bids in 13 different trade areas. Just that bid process alone reduced the estimated cost by over $800,000. So, certainly put the project back in line with what we were hoping and looking for. So, we did complete the post-bid discussions. We did that on a Thursday and a Monday, just finished those up last week. Eric was part of those, part of that. Becky and Jim from Thornpool Manor were part of that. Myself and Mike Snyder from COA were part of that, and then Dave Hatfield and Bob Tuneson sat on those. So, we spoke to some of the contractors, came up with a list of stuff we still need to look at. But for the most part, what I've presented in your packet is the preliminary budget detail. This is just for the COA portion of the building. So, you can see that on there. I mean, I don't think I need to read the numbers to you, but I'll just, $5.3 million for the construction piece of it, and then that does include the fees that were agreed upon when we went into contract with Frederick Construction. And then we do have furniture and fixtures and equipment that we will need to look at as well as moving expenses. Most of our kitchen equipment will be being moved. That's not just, that's not the same as moving boxes, right? The equipment's 10, 15 years old. We need to take care of it. We need to make sure it's moved appropriately so that we can continue those cost savings that we were looking at. So, I just, one thing I want to point out for this whole process is that the COA Board, the Steering Committee, we've always been about, what do we need without, without adding a lot of wants, right? So, really, what does the building need to look like? What does it need to do to function? Even as we, even as we did the post-bid interviews and, you know, a painter came back and said, well, if you did this on the ceiling, it would save you thousands of dollars. Okay, well, let's do that. Okay. So, we've been very open to making sure that we're making decisions that are financially reasonable decisions, but also sticking to having some standards for the project, right? Like, we don't want to do it, you know, we want to make sure it's a quality building when we're done, and that it gets me through retirement before anything starts happening. I'm just joking. I'm joking. I did check, the roof warranty is 25 years, though, so I think we're good, at least, like you said, to me. So, you did see the preliminary budget detail with some still potential changes. Some of those will be savings, a few of those might be some cost increases, really thinking that, though, that this is a good budget, a good sound budget, that we're not going to need a ton of change orders right off the bat. I mean, I feel like we asked good questions during the post-bid interviews to make sure that that wasn't going to be the case. Again, there's still some things to figure out, but, so, just asking for permission to go forward with this. So, permission for you to accept the preliminary budget gives Frederick Construction the ability to then go into contract with the subcontractors, so that contract's held with them, not with us, because our contract's with Frederick Construction, as well as we'll continue working on this list. And we are looking at a start date of the end of April if everything is approved.
Commissioner Tuneson, Commissioner Hatfield, since you sat on this and went through the bid process with them, any input?
This has been an amazing experience, and I've enjoyed every moment of it. Probably the biggest thing that I've witnessed is the cooperation in, between Becky Dehan and Courtney, how they want to work together for the betterment of the whole, of the whole, the facility for the whole county to utilize, okay? So, and we put a lot of effort into making this practical, okay? Try to, like, like Courtney just said, there was a want list there, and reality is that we needed to be very practical with this, and I think we've done a great job of that. The vetting of all the contractors to make sure that they were good with their bid numbers was a good process last week or so that Commissioner Hatfield was nice at it. Jim, the Facilities Manager at Thornpool Manor, was key in this because a lot of the systems that's going to be, especially the heating and stuff like that, they need to be somewhat compatible with what they're used to, so they know how to, to run it when, when they're The power, you know, went all the way to try to utilize what they have out there already just for cost savings, so. And I want to say one thing about Greg and from Frederick, he is 100% a good man, good company, and looking out for the best of this county and this project. And he keeps mentioning, you know, the quality of it, so I'm very, I was very impressed with the whole situation, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield?
Well, I can only echo that. I think that this was a very interesting process, a little different than any other major building project that I've been involved in. I think that everybody that was in those meetings over the last couple of weeks, you know, brought a certain level of experience with, with these types of projects. I probably brought less than anybody else. I could just sit there and benefit from the expertise that was around me, but, you know, I commend everybody. I think Bob doesn't give himself enough credit for the experience and the contacts that he has in, in, in the industry, but same thing, you know? Courtney's familiarity with, with the project, Becky and Jim outstanding, Eric and Jeff brought a great, you know, broader perspective from, from the county, and I think, if nothing else, I certainly walked out of there feeling that Frederick was a great choice, but that great choice, but that collectively the homework has been done and we've got a great team of subs in place. And as you'll see, if you read through the action request, you know, we've got good representation from Berry County and Southwest Michigan, and that was also very important to us. I think there were a number of good examples where those local contractors have enabled us to save a pretty significant amount of money. So it was a great process and I'm looking forward to getting this approved and starting to see some earth moved out there.
Mr. Colton, you sit on that board. Anything you'd like to add to that discussion?
Well, it's been really a great experience. As Courtney has mentioned, the whole process, you know, has been, it seems kind of drawn out, but it's deliberate. And I think the result's going to be fantastic. And also our board, we've got a great board, a lot of them are sitting here, and all the support is there for this. And just want to keep this ball rolling forward.
Fantastic. Additional questions or comments from Commissioners? Becky?
Yeah.
Question for you. We haven't heard a lot about the Harvest Point end of this. I know you had mentioned moving kitchen equipment. And I know the goal is to kind of consolidate or kind of share some resources in there. Is Harvest Point's piece coming into this as well at some point?
Yeah, we are ready to go financially or sound. And I feel that the biggest hurdle for us is just getting a dialysis team on board that can manage for the county. But I've got support there as well. So I guess the next steps is basically, you know, breaking ground and getting this project going. I think the dialysis need in the community is huge. So the list is continuing to build and we're having to deny residents because we don't have that in place for them. So excited to get that up and running, so.
As a, my father is a dialysis patient and finding chairs and times, depending on when people are in Florida and moving back when the migration happens, it's been pretty amazing to try to schedule all those things and kind of live through that. So that would be a huge benefit for Berry County to have that type of service there, so.
You asked questions specifically about kitchen equipment. We're not building our whole separate kitchen. We're, you know, this project still fundamentally uses the Harvest Point kitchen facilities, but.
I do want to clarify, we will have a warm-in kitchen just like we have now, and we will have a space set aside for Meals on Wheels to pack up the truck, to pack up the meals, to store some of the food that will be utilized at Harvest Point to make our meals. So there will still be a kitchen setup. There is a walk-in cooler as part of the project, part of, in order to create a better flow, a better workflow, a better storage flow between the two entities and between our Meals on Wheels drivers. So I just want to make sure as transparent as possible, so. But that's why we're not buying new equipment. The only new equipment we have to buy is a hood because ours is not going to come out of the building without tearing the building down. So, but other than that, our equipment's going with us because we will just continue as we have been, so.
Yeah, and the Meals on Wheels in August, we started doing the cold foods. So we've been providing that service for Berry County and I think that's going pretty well. There's been obviously a few hiccups that we've learned things with, but nothing that we haven't been able to work through. Probably the biggest is when there's a snow day, you know, we've got fresh food ready to go out, what do we do with that food? It sits for a day or two based on the weather and we don't have the refrigerator capacity and/or the ability to store, you know, days of food to make the future food. So everything we're doing is very real-time. So that's probably one of the biggest challenges with the whole Meals on Wheels. And I know hot foods, we're really looking to get that, you know, transitioned in the next year. But again, that same challenge, the storage of the product to make the food is probably the biggest challenge. Once we make that commitment to go forward with hot foods, then we'll hire a full-time person, probably a Harvest Point, to manage that system. And that'll make, I think, a lot of continuity as well that will help them provide hot foods to their Meals on Wheels and their current needs as well. So lots of moving pieces, just kind of waiting to see how that's going to impact the whole. And, but we, we know that right now, I think it's going well. And I think the residents of the community have come back with good feedback. So it's nice to hear that they're enjoying the food and it's fresh, so.
Fantastic. And Greg, timeline-wise, if we break ground in April?
We got 12 months, 10 out of schedule.
12 months, okay. And, and with the approval of this today, then you can go forward and place those bids?
Yeah, we would essentially award subcontractors and material purchase orders that we received on bid day while we wait for permitting.
Okay. This has been an amazing process, seeing this go through with everything in it. Reading through this, the $800,000 was one thing that certainly caught my eye, that the bid process worked. That, and something that Commissioner Hatfield mentioned is that, super excited about the fact that we're able to use a lot of local contractors, a lot of people in Berry County or Southwest Michigan, that we're feeding families in our community versus going out. So I think this was done right. I think there's some savings involved in there. The process of saving the money is certainly fantastic and I look forward to seeing the collaboration between Harvest Point, Thorn Apple, COA, tying this all together, as well as continuing to work with our other facilities throughout the county and keeping everybody involved in the process so we can create, you know, as we had talked about, just a complex that'll be a pride center for everybody in the county. So fantastic, fantastic work, so. Additional questions or comments? There's no question.
I got a couple. Do you see any problem in the material list of getting them or backlogs like we did in COVID? Is that over with?
You know, we're still seeing delivery issues with electrical gear, but that's about it. Sub panels and big breakers are still an issue. But we have time on this project because depending on the final utility results, we may be reusing a large portion of the gear that already exists.
And with this being okay today, will tariffs be a problem? Whose problem will that be with this issue?
I was wondering the same thing, honestly. Like, if we can move this quicker, obviously it's in our best interest for tariffs, but...
Yeah, you know, the sooner we write subcontract agreements and purchase orders, the less risk there would be for those increases. But all of the standard construction contracts are going to have a clause for unforeseen escalations that, you know, ultimately we would have to talk about, right?
Were we able to utilize the security systems that you guys have at Harvest Point into the new COA facility as well? So they're kind of, so when we're working on these things, that we have the same system and not different systems, if there's some?
So any system-type stuff will be the same as what is being utilized. They have card readers at Harvest Point. We have added that to two or three doors, I believe. But cost-wise, it's not cost-effective for Commission on Aging to add that to our whole portion of the building. So we've done that at main points where it would be necessary for Harvest Point staff to be able to utilize, get into our building. Fire suppression, all of that stuff will all be on the same, the heat, I think Bob mentioned that, everything will be on the same system and...
Cameras potentially.
Yep.
Run through the same.
Okay.
One more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's a lot of moving parts here because of the separation. And that was, that was the big thing, is that every contractor that came in, we had to talk to them about, you do realize that Thorn Apple Manor is going to assume this much of the cost. That's why I want everybody to be clarified on this, is that, that's where that separation is, that they had to bid this all separately for Thorn Apple Manor's portion versus the COA portion. So they had to understand that this much is for here and this much is for COA. So it was, it was a little complexity there. It was, it was not an easy thing. And I think that's one of the reasons why we want to move on this fast now, is that for lead times for these contractors, if they know something's going to happen, they can order quickly on some of them, not obviously get way down the line. I mean, you can't foresee, you know, having things sitting around for six or eight months, but it will help people know what they need to do too as a contractor, if you know price increases are coming, so. That's good timing that we need to move on this now.
To your point about it is good time, you know, we got, you know, with the way the drawings came out and when they went to market, you know, we're in front of the typical summer K-12 school construction. So, you know, people are looking to fill their schedules for next summer. So, you know, that's part of why the pricing was favorable.
Fantastic. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Berry County Board of Commissioners approval of the preliminary budget for the new COA facility.
So move, Hatfield.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tuneson to recommend of the Berry County Board of Commissioners approval of the preliminary budget for the COA facility. Additional questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. It's 10 o'clock. We're going to take about a five to seven minute recess and we'll be right back. recess and we'll be right back.
I don't know what I did.
Just Bob was just over here somewhere.
Nice hits to come.
Just here.
He's sneaky like that.
We're going to watch him all the time.
I'm sure he'll be right back. We will get started without him. So, good morning, Eric. Jail feasibility study.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, one of the, as we've discussed since I've started, one of the top priorities of the Commission is to move forward on a jail project, whatever that scenario takes. But I know it has been number one on everyone's list of things to get done that I met with in '24. Six of the eight of you went down to visit Branch County a couple of weeks ago. I think it was a great trip. I think hopefully you all learned from that process and saw what a different type of jail will look like. And you'll see what ours looks like this after, right after this meeting. So, for those of you who are able to attend, I also appreciate the Sheriff, the other Sheriff, Lieutenant Evans and their staff for coming down and really giving, getting an eye on it from their perspective. So it's really, we look at it one way, they look at it, they got to operate the facility. So I think hopefully they learned from that process and from what I've heard, they enjoyed it, got to see some things. And I think they're excited to host you today, so you can see the difference. And I'd make this a higher priority. But in working with Jim Eskamia, Abbott Marsh Vice, ABB, first step in a jail project is a jail feasibility study. You have a proposal in front of you, as I understand this is, prior Commission has worked with Jim, and that's why I reached out to him, because he designed the Branch County jail. So there was a good synergy in that one. But the proposal you have before you will take you from the start to the end with a plan. It will identify, as you can see in there, identifies five options: a jail on a new site, a jail on the existing site, a new jail on the existing site, renovate the existing jail, renovate and expand the existing jail, or anything else that pops up. Because there will be something else that will pop up during the process. And it really will look through that process and come through, develop a concept design, and also a cost estimate, which I think is imperative if we're going to move forward to discuss with the community on any level, that we know where we potentially will put a jail, how much it will cost, how much it will cost to operate, because that will be part of their plan as well. And really take us from A to Z. So as you need to make a decision then, how we move forward, like you do with COA, I think this gives you that information. It's not a sharp process. I mean, I think we're starting at the right time, here in '25, early '25. We'll get it done this year, and then really set us up for discussions in '26.
Did Vice provide a timeframe on how long?
I believe he said four to six months when we met in person. He said, we've done it in a month, we've done it in a year. He said some of it depends on us, how we gather information for him. So he said roughly four to six, but we could definitely get it done in shorter.
Okay. And this isn't something that's done from a distance, though actually when they're doing a feasibility study, it's not just drawings. This is getting in our jail, looking at what we have, looking at what parts are good, bad, what's falling apart, what's not useful, what's outdated, and just basically making a recommendation.
Yeah, and I think it's also meaning with staff, meaning the Sheriff, the other Sheriff, Lieutenant Evans, their staff, and really saying, okay, what do you need to see in the jail? What do you want to see in the jail? I think we've learned some, they, Vice has done this, we'll say it's Abbott Marsh now, because Vice sold, bought them out a few years ago. But Mr. Eskamia has done this multiple times, so they can bring that experience to the table. But also our staff, it's key to get them, seeing Branch County, see other options. We can start other jails we can go visit, and really see new approaches to things. I think he mentioned there's also, hey, we're going to want to take you to, you know, an expo conference, so you can talk to the vendors of the new items, you know, new securities, video cameras, new types of everything. Really see what works for Berry County, because I think that's the key, is branches is great for them, and there are some things they would do different. I think, Chris Jackson will echo, the pod design was awesome, especially from a maintenance perspective. But is there things that we need to do different? And I really think that's working with the Sheriff's Department and their staff, we can really put ourselves in a position to make sure if we go forward with any type of request to the community, we have as much information, put our best foot forward.
Yeah, and I guess we have to meet with Vice to be sure they know what we want. But I think not only is it important that we get into the jail, and the people who are working at the jail and living the jail, but also our judges and our probation, and people who are working around there. How do we make their jobs easier? Because, I mean, literally Berry County's been great for collaboration, but we need to figure out, I mean, how to not just incarcerate people, but how to rehabilitate people. How do we incorporate education and information in just making this a better thing? I mean, how do we work in this community so people come out and have a chance? So I've got a bigger vision for what I'd like to see in there, but everything comes with a price tag.
Sure.
You know, so we have to look at some of that. I just want, I just want to be sure that everybody, all the, all the different, all the different components in our community that make this thing work, people who deal with that are involved in this. I need Vice to be sure they understand that as well, because it's not a, it's not a, it's not insignificant amount of money when you're looking at $42,000 to do a jail study. But I understand we have to have a starting point here to really have somebody professionally evaluate where we're at with our current facility, what our needs are. I know when we worked on this seven years ago, six, seven years ago, that facility was 125 or 126 beds. And then the administration in Lansing changed, and nobody's in jail anymore. So our average jail population's been around 50, 45 to 50 if I remember right. I think Kevin's still back there. But, you know, so what do we need to build? And how do we future-proof it? And how do we make it something that we can work with here, with all our entities involved?
Yeah, I think the key is, we need the expert to come in and look at it from a, you know, design standpoint, cost standpoint. I think we as a community should establish a jail study committee, Commissioners, people from the Sheriff's Department, people from the community that you're talking about, and really look at making that recommendation back to the Commission. Because that way, it's not just, hey, Eric, or Dar, or Kevin said, hey, this is the best way to go. This is a community-based approach. And say, hey, we've looked at all those different issues. So while that's not in my motion or recommendation today, I would recommend that's something you strongly consider, because I think that goes a long way. And as we try to, once again, at the end, sell this to the community, it's, this has been looked at comprehensively. It's been all aspects of people involved in the project have looked at and think this is the best way forward. Plus, when you need to sell, if you need to sell anything down the road, you have a group that's knowledgeable about the issue, can say, hey, yeah, we've looked at this. And once again, this is not an individual issue, this is not a Dar issue, it's not an Eric issue, Commissioner Jackson issue, this is a community issue, this is a generational project. So we want to make sure we do this right.
Yeah, and everybody wants to know what the price tag is, but obviously until we get through this feasibility study, we'll have no idea what the price tag is.
Correct.
Once we find out that, then it becomes an Eric problem.
Yes, it does.
Then we'll start talking about that.
And the Commissioner Jackson, and the Commissioner, and the Commissioner.
Exactly, exactly. Questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Colton?
I really like the idea of bringing the community in right at the beginning, because I think, you know, that maybe didn't happen in the past, and we don't want that same result. So if there's going to be a sell at some point in time, it's going to really be more effective that the community was involved right from beginning, whether, rather than trying to bring it to them and say, this is what you need.
I agree. And I think maybe that's, we create an hot committee on jail, and we would work with them, the Sheriff's Department would work with them, and to review all these issues.
I can't, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Complete a statement. I don't know if the institutional knowledge is here in this room, but the last attempt with supporting a jail that did work out, did we have this kind of feasibility study? Does anyone know as to institutional knowledge here?
Tower Pinkster did a very thorough analysis of it. I don't think they quite had the community connection we were looking for at that point. You know, I think the price tag was 25 million. I don't remember the date on that, is that, that was five to seven years ago, probably seven, closer to seven right now.
Your microphone's on? Sorry. I'm old.
Mine is on. Maybe I'm not close enough to it.
You can hear it now.
Okay. I'll get closer.
So all Commissioners, make sure you're on when you talk.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
I'm here, Eric. Can you hear me, Eric? Are you over there? Okay. You can't, I can't see him anymore. I miss him in that chair. As with anything else, there's always questions that come about and everything. So I think it's very important that the community stays in touch with those questions. And I've been approached already with this question, and by more than one, how we actually went about to picking this company for the feasibility study. It is $42,000. Normally, we look for more than one person or company or something, but it's just a question that was asked of me, and I'm passing it on to you, Eric.
When I started, that's, Michael indicated that's the company we were going to be working with, with the jail. So I didn't ask many questions past that, and I just started working with them.
We were looking for somebody that had a reputation of being more connected to the community, a little more blue collar, someone that had dug in. We talked to Branch County, with their successful jail, and even though it didn't pass on the first time they went through it, that they had used different folks involved in it, and Vice came highly recommended, I call him Vice, Abermarch?
Abbott Marsh.
Abbott Marsh. That, they were just very down-to-earth, willing to work with us, very creative in some of their approaches and some of the success at what they had. And price-wise, for what they were telling us, without doing this study, they seemed to be a little more in touch with contractors and saving us some money on it. So there were several things that went into why we chose them to work with.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Bassett?
Yes, one comment on that. I have used this firm in my medical practice. They actually did some, some studies for us and some designs for us, and they were an excellent firm to work with. I felt they had a lot of interaction with the people in my practice, got input, but they also had the expertise. And so did not have to spend a whole lot of time, you know, looking into things, because they had the expertise in-house. So I think it's, it was a really fine firm to work with. These, of course, are different people, a different division, but I do think this is a really good firm, and seemed reasonably priced when we were looking for firms to work with.
And for those of you who don't know, Commissioner Bassett joining our team also has some extensive community corrections background as well. So that may be a benefit to us in this project as well. So, other than being incarcerated, that means.
A lot of prisons, let's just say that.
There you go. Commissioner Welker?
Also, when we talked to him, and I talked to him at MAC, and I think Dave was there, and Michael Brown was there, we talked to different companies, and I was really impressed with the IT man for this, security. And what, I don't believe that we are going to be able to cut staff, but I do believe that we can get by with the staff we have with the right IT work in the jail.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Tuneson?
Eric mentioned it, but I think all eight of us, when we sat down with him, we realized that now's the time for this board to figure this out. Okay? It's been tried, it's been, but it is a situation where we do have to sell it to the community, obviously, and we all, all need to work hard at that, because a lot of people right now are in no mood for tax increase. So we need to explore every avenue. I mean, every one of us probably asked Eric, is there any way we can pay for this ourselves? And what's his comment? No. Right? And not without cutting things at the county level. So I think it's a great idea that we explore every avenue and that the public's fully aware of that we have on every road to try to see what is the most feasible way to get this done. So that's the way I think we need to approach it. And I think that we're all committed to it, to getting this done. So.
Well, that is the million-dollar question. If you're going to spend $42,000, is this the year that we're going to wrap our heads around this and charge forward with this and figure it out? Because there's got to be a way forward with it, and there's got to be a way forward that makes sense. There's got to be a way forward that involves all of our stakeholders, that involves the community, but in the end, creates a multi-generational facility, because people have said, as you guys have heard, and it's for, well, I don't like our Sheriff, or I don't like the current whatever. You know, it's not about a person, it's about a multi-generational facility that's going to be here 30, 40, 50 years. And you have to think about, how do we put together a building that creates a safer community, that helps people get rehabilitated, that's a safer community. So safer communities, my whole thought behind this, how do we work with our judges and our other stakeholders and people that are involved in corrections and probation, and make everything work going forward? So that's the, that's the plan up here, how we promote that or how we make that work, we'll go through with, starting with Abermarch, and move this forward. And after you spend that money, you can look at it and see what the next step is. But this is really the first step in the process. I mean, this is, this is the very, very first step. We're preliminary discussing anything else at this point. So.
Yeah, I think if we don't do our homework, our due diligence, whatever phrase you want to use, I don't feel, coming back to you, nor the community, saying, hey, this is the plan. If we just said, hey, we think it's going to be 60 million, and two mils or half a mil for 10 years, if I can't, if I don't have a site and a plan picked out for you, I don't think we're doing our job. And this is that first step.
Okay. I think this is the year. I think this is the time to go forward and do this. But other questions or comments?
I guess my, one other question for you on the jail study is, is making sure, you know, we get those interested parties in, all aspects of the population. So if there's people you recommend, forward my way, and we'll put together a list for creation of that committee for you at some point.
Absolutely. We have several that we want to be involved in this. But there are no further questions. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached proposal from Abermarch Vice to complete a jail master plan for the purpose of developing a plan for the replacement of the Berry County Jail at a cost of up to $42,000, with funds to be paid from the Building Rehabilitation Fund, and authorize the county administrator to sign the professional service agreement with Abermarch.
So moved Hatfield.
To work. Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the attached proposal from Abermarch Vice to complete the jail master plan for purposes of developing a plan for the replacement of the Berry County Jail at a cost of up to $42,000, with funds to be paid from the Building Rehab Fund, and authorize the county administrator to sign professional services agreement with Abermarch. Additional questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next.
I know what I'll be doing for '25 now.
You know, one of the things.
One of the things, yeah, right, right.
Rent Garage?
Also in my, actually, at the end of this month will be six months since I started. So in that time, you know, I've been working with staff to look at facilities, issues, just trying to come up, just come to speed on things. One of the properties that we own that's been a problem at times, just because it's a parking lot and an old garage, is a former Rent Garage at 109 Walnut Street, corner of Jefferson and Walnut, just south of us. And we use it for emergency management, has some things in the garage. I know courts have got some vehicles that park down there, but really from a use standpoint, not a high priority. And from my perspective, and others may disagree, but if we're not utilizing, really utilizing a facility, let's get it back on the tax roll, let's get it to a positive use. Once again, I have, I've had people, the cities over the years have said, hey, look, you've got people just parking there, it's a nuisance, can you guys take care of that? I've had people call since I've been here saying, hey, I want to use that for parking, I got kids that moved home. And once again, the city doesn't really want us doing that. because that's not a really allowable use from the zoning perspective. So I'm requesting your permission to move forward with the sale of the property and going through that process. You know, we'd get an appraisal done on it and put an RFP out, there are some interested parties, I'm already talking to the city, people who have built housing, which we know is an issue in our community, so I think this is a really positive move for us and can help improve a little corner of the City of Hastings. So with your approval, I would move forward on that process.
Yeah, I have been by that several times. I've seen trailers, many cars parked in there, and when we first started discussing it, my concern was about our liability. Someone breaks into a car, somebody falls down in that parking lot, given that they don't have permission to park there, that doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't be liable for it, so I see that being a positive step forward, that if it's useful life for the counties come to an end, it's probably time to move on from it.
Yeah, based on the stories I've heard why we ended up with it, it's not really an issue anymore.
Okay. Question from Commissioners. Mr. Getty.
Do we have, are we going to get an appraisal or a market value appraisal?
Appraisal will be done first thing.
Okay.
If you approve it next week, then I'll get an appraisal order.
Commissioner Bassett.
How is it zoned?
It's a residential zoning, and so it can have multiple units. The City of Hastings has been creative in how it's done some of their zoning, in talking to the city manager and their community development director, I think they definitely want to see housing there. But they, if something hasn't fit, they've also done some planned new developments in places, which I'm not here to critique or anything like that, but it seems to me they can get three, four, or five units out of that corner, it would be beneficial for the city. I think possible.
Absolutely. Commissioner Smelker, do you have a question? Okay. Commissioner Hatfield.
Well, I'm not speaking for the city, but I'm speaking as the Chair of the City's Planning Commission. Yeah, the zoning for multifamily is currently in flux with the city. This would, in this particular area, right now, it would be limited to a two-unit, depending on how many lots that actually could be split into, but that's, you know, the city is anxious to encourage residential development, and we're looking at a number of proposals that could potentially have a positive impact on density. So I think the city will be, I would hope that the city would be very interested in working with us to make sure that the best possible use of that land is made. It's really nothing more than an eyesore right now, and I find it personally very hard to believe that we really have a significant potential use for that property, so it needs to be gone.
Yeah, I talked to Dan King at the City, he has some people who are interested in building, so we get it on the market, I think they'll be interested in the partial, and really, I love infill, I mean, my community development background, economic development background, I love seeing reuse of properties rather than going out and building on 40 new, you know, we need that too, but if we can utilize what we have, it's a lot better for us all.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? The Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the county administrator to advertise the Renn Garage 109 Walnut Street for sale. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Court.
Motion by Tunison, support by Smelker, to authorize the county administrator to advertise the Renn Garage at 109 Walnut Street as a for-sale property. Additional discussion or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Eric. Last on our list of agenda items today, we hired Eric back in July, you said six months now, huh?
Yep.
Just think, only 29 and a half more years to go.
I'll be almost 80.
So, so one of the things we discussed when we put this, because of the statute with the board coming in place, we entered into a one-year contract. As the terms that we had done with Michael, previous administrators, we had typically done either two- or three-year contracts on that, and I think that's within the scope of this board to do that, now that we have four-year terms. In discussions with Eric, there's no additional pay raise, the pay raise, the money that he agreed to when he started back in July is staying through the balance of this year. There'll be a process in place for evaluation, probably in July, where everybody will have input from various stakeholders throughout the county who are working with Eric, just to see that, and then as we go into the next budget, we'll negotiate what the next salary would be for the next year. So standard practice, you know, just to do a yearly evaluation, update, and then make a decision accordingly on where to go with that. So if you had a chance to read through this, read through the contract, any questions or concerns with this? Okay. I think in the six months, I know Eric's hit the ground running, we all had a big question mark when you have somebody that's been there for 30 years, like, holy crap, like, what are we going to do? But I think Eric's come in, built some relationships, covered a lot of ground quickly, learned some of our systems, hasn't come in with a baseball bat and demolished a lot of things, but is trying to learn from a lot of the people who have that institutional knowledge. So I've been impressed with what he's done in a short amount of time. It's been, it's a quick learning curve coming into this, so I think he's done an excellent job, so like I said, it was a question mark on how to replace those years with Michael, but I think we've got the right person in the right position, and I am in favor of extending that contract for a three-year term, so. Commissioner Hatfield?
Agreed.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I think Eric's done a great job here. I did have some concern expressed at why we didn't wait for the full year, and it was explained very well to me by Commissioner Hatfield that not only does it benefit Eric to know what his future is, but it also benefits us as a board to know what ours is, so very happy to have him here, I think he's done a great job.
Okay. Additional questions, comments? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners' approval of the attached deployment contract for Berry County Administrator between the County of Berry and Eric Afzouska effective February 11, 2025 through January 31, 2028.
So moved. Hatfield.
Support. Campbell.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Campbell, Campbell to recommend of the Board of Commissioners' approval of the attached deployment contract for the Berry County Administrator between the County of Berry and Eric Afzouska effective February 11, 2025 through January 1, 2028. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes on anything that is on your mind. Mark, welcome back.
Good morning. Mark Doster, Preval Township. I tried with my greatest amount of restraint to listen and not say anything, but since I'm here, I might as well. Regarding the jail, I have brought up a couple times that as a kind of a preliminary act, if you want to sell this on the public and get their support, that you need to look at just the possibility of renting space at another facility. There is so much empty space surrounding us, and it's cheap, you know, it's a totally different ballpark than when we looked at this prior. This Branch County jail that you visited, they are renting space at $30 a day. You would not need a bond, or, you know, you would not need to sell this to the public. It would be something that theoretically could be done. We're getting so that we don't transport prisoners nearly to the extent that we did. We have a much smaller jail population. I think it's something that you could have them, there was a little contract of Abermarch for anything else kind of in that contract. That's something that would be very simple, I think, for them to look at just so you can rule it out if nothing else early on, but I think it's something that with due diligence, you do need to look at because it could be an enormous cost savings, and you only get one opportunity to do that. Once you build a jail, you will never have an opportunity to do that again, so now's the time. The other issue I wanted to bring up was the COA building. I've put on a lot of roofs in my lifetime, 25 years ago, 25-year-old roofs, they're all rotten. They all need metal roofs. If I'd have put a metal roof on it the first time, I would have saved all that cost and all that labor. A metal roof will last almost forever. A building is only as valuable as its roof. That's what killed off the last COA building, is it didn't have a decent roof. You get one opportunity to do that. If there, I know that you want to, cost savings and so forth, but if you ever put money into something, it should be the roof. Even, I know that there's this thought that, well, I won't be sitting here in 25 years, so, you know, what's the matter, it'll be the next board's problem or whatever, and it's like, when it comes to government, 25 years is the blink of an eye. That will be here faster than you know, and you're pushing that cost onto that board, even at the bare minimum, look at a 50-year shingle instead of a 25-year shingle, if it's absolutely necessary to have it match the rest of the building or something, but there's a place to do, invest a little more now. Just think what replacing that roof will be in 25 years. I mean, there will be a very substantial cost, it doesn't need to be. Where I live in Doster, there are roofs on 125-year-old buildings of metal that do not leak. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. And just to answer your question, we are taking that into consideration on empty jail space as well.
Thank you.
That is a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Shelley.
Shelley Lake, Irving Township, and very well answered, thank you. Answered all my questions in the earlier topics, so thanks. One thing, with the renting space in other jails, it just comes to mind, we would lose a lot of jobs here, but that's not why I came up here anyway. Regarding the ad hoc committee for the jail, I don't, when you bring public and whoever, I don't know if, you said you have people in mind, if they would be interviewing with Eric and choosing those people and how people would be invited, because I know there's a lot of people interested, not many, thank you very much, that could contribute, but putting the word out to let people know they are interested, they've been invested for a lot of years, just wondering how that would work. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing Commissioner comments, Commissioner Tunison.
I guess, maybe a little story, I guess. So I've said this numerous times, but Commissioner Hatfield and I, when we were running for Commissioner, we would, while we were campaigning and stuff, so we'd meet for breakfast, you know, and just talk, and mainly the talks were about what we heard as we were running for Commissioner, was every week when I came and sat out in that audience, Sharon Zabrowski or Mike would get up and say, what are you guys going to do about the COA? What are you going to do about the COA? You've got to do something about COA. And we would sit there and say, that is obviously a priority that we need to address as a board, and when this new board came on board, not saying that the other board before us didn't want to deal with it, but we did deal with it, okay? We did, and today is a labor of the two years that got put into this, and I think this is a great accomplishment for, not only for us, but as the community. And our next endeavor needs to be the jail, and that's what we would talk about too, about we need to get a jail done in the timeframe that we are going to be sitting up there because it's been kicked down the road for a long time. And I know as a group here, all of us putting our heads together with Eric's help, community help, that we can get this done too. I know we can, so that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just a guru of Bob, very unusual, but not really, not really, I just want to pick on Bob for a minute, he'll give it back to me later. Yeah, you know, I've already started to talk about jail at my townships and stuff, I think it's something we want to be very forward with and forthcoming with the community. It's not going to be eight commissioners building a jail, that's impossible. It's going to be a team, and it's going to take everybody in our county to put the skin in the game, and we can get this job done. I think keeping them informed and knowing exactly what our steps are and where we're going is the key.
Commissioner Hatfield?
I don't know that I've really got anything to add to what both of them have to say, but it is a community issue. Public safety is the bottom line, and public safety takes into, is a big blanket that covers a lot of things, and there are a lot of potential solutions out there. We need to make sure that this is a process that does look at all of the alternatives and do so in a way that addresses the long-term needs of Berry County. So I look at, COA is a great example of a very successfully done process, and we need to hope and pray that we are as successful with looking at the jail issue as we were looking at the resolution to the COA situation, so. I look forward to it because I think there's a, it's going to be a massive undertaking, but I think we'll learn a lot, so I look forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smelker?
I agree. I'm excited about the jail, and when we take it to the community, I'm positive there's three things the community's going to want, and they're going to want to know where it is, how much it's going to cost, and what it's going to look like, and I think BICE is our best bet.
Commissioner Getty?
Boy, everybody's stolen what I was going to say, but I really want to thank the COA Board again, like, we talk about building the right team, and it started with the members of that board, and we just spent several meetings interviewing candidates for boards, and I think you see the benefit, the right people sitting in the chairs making those kinds of decisions and recommendations to us, and we couldn't have done it without them and without the cooperation with Thor Apple Manor, Becky DeHaan, I mean, just from the beginning, it has been a sound process, and I agree with Commissioner Smelker.
That is a very shocking meeting this morning.
Yeah, we need to know what it's going to look like, we need to know where it's going to be and how much it's going to cost.
Mr. Colton?
Ditto's on the COA Board, just the amount of them that came here today just shows the dedication of the Board. A lot of great people, and there's a lot of expertise, and definitely passion there. I do also, this is just general Commissioner comment, right? Well, if you love pancakes, and if you love the Woodland Fire Department, they're having their pancake breakfast Sunday. I know I'll be there. And that runs from 8:00 to 10:30.
Wonderful. Commissioner Bassett?
I really don't think I have anything to add to what other people have said, but I just, you know, I'm really happy now to be on the end of the COA and the decisions made. also, excited about the endeavor with the jail. And, you know, David, you and I talked about this before I was elected, that I have a little passion for corrections, and so, I'm happy to be part of this effort and make sure we keep our communities engaged and we make good decisions for the community, so...
Absolutely. And speaking of the jail, we will see you all down there for a tour of our jail, so you can get a, if you haven't had a chance to be in there, and I haven't been there for a few years, but you'll get a chance today, coming from Branch County and a newer facility to our facility, which I believe is in the 1960 era with two or three additions to it, and some of the things they just don't do. You'll get an explanation of why we need to focus on safer communities, and what we can do to make it a better facility for our county. So, anyways, thanks for everybody coming out today, especially our COA Board. Congratulations to you on the great work in getting those contracts assigned. We're looking forward to see how that works in the future. So, everybody have a great day.